All right, good evening, everyone. It is five o'clock. We are now starting the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Can we call for order, please?
Yes. Christopher Toth. Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Keith Alborn.
Here.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Jeffrey Esses.
Here.
Patrice Parsons is not here. Joshua Bingaman is not here either. Jordan Scott.
Here.
And David Barrow.
I'm here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. All right, well, we'll move forward on to citizen comments, please. Um, just kind of want to lay it out. Um, we're going to go through these. Again, each time, you have three minutes. If you have multiple agenda items, uh, hopefully, you have them written down here. And if it's a separate item, we'll go to, we'll wait for that item for you to speak again. Um, that way, we can get the three minutes and move to the next person. But you will get your three minutes per agenda item if you have that. So, up first, we have Ian Riker Watts. Did I get that correct? All right. All right, sir, can you please state your name and address, please? Thank you.
Cool, I think it's working. Hi, I'm Ian Riker Watts. I live at thirteen Lost Pines Avenue. And, uh, I just, real quick, I just wanted to, uh, to say, I, I really like that we're making, uh, progress and, and changing up some of these restrictions and, and hopefully increasing the penalties. Um, however, I feel like the current penalty, as I was reading in the agenda, seems awfully light. Um, and I understand the, the need to not punish individuals that mess up for a couple of trees. Um, but something like Pearl River, I'm, I guess I'm not seeing how the, this new penalty is going to really punish them any more than the existing one did. Um, so I'd love to see the math on that and kind of see what the new Pearl River, like, penalty would be with these new rules. Um, and I wonder if, if it's too low, if there's a way to make the penalty scale up, not linearly. Uh, so as the amount of trees and the violations pile up, start getting multipliers on that and it really stacks up. Um, I think that there should be a lot more teeth on this. Um, and other than that, I'm, I'm really happy to see, uh, progress, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ian. All right. Excuse me, Alondra. Can we make note that, uh, Commissioner Bingaman is here? All right. Next up to speak, we have Shannon Day. Hello, Ms. Day, can you please state your name and address?
Yeah, my name's Shannon Day. I live at thirteen Lost Pines Avenue. Um, I'm going to piggyback off what Ian said. You know, we've, um, been big advocates for the trees in this town. And, um, you know, I don't have any, um, baseline to judge the, the fine on. But like, in my head, I'm thinking like, two thousand dollars a caliper inch? Like, make them afraid, make, uh, developers be intentional with what they're going to do and not just steamroll in and pay the fine and then make their millions of dollars back on, you know, whatever they built. Um, you know, when we drive around our city, we see the trees, we see nature, we know that we're a bird city, but developers that aren't from here, that don't live here, might just see dollar signs when they see undeveloped land. So, I'm just advocating for the fine to be hefty and, like Ian said, to scale up. And, um, I think that'd be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, up next, we have Jen Lucas. And you don't have, if you wish to speak or not? It's, you have four B point five. So, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're going in order from agenda items. So, we're going like B through whatever year, you just so happened to pop up first. But on here, it doesn't have if you want to speak or not? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, come on up, please. Oh, you want to wait on the item till it comes up? I got you, I understand. I got you. We can wrap it up. All right, sounds wonderful. My apologies. All right, well, then that is it for citizen comments. You have one? Online? Okay, let me see. Sorry. Do we have the one from Ms. Moore? And do we do have one here from, uh, Catherine Albers? Are you here? So, Ms. Moore, would, uh, she said she submitted one online. And I have one here from Catherine Albers and Heather Ben- Benamo. Okay. Okay, Ms. Moore, would you like to come up, please? Thank you. Can you please state your name and address? And you have-
Debbie Moore, thirteen oh-six Church Street in Bastrop, Texas.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Um, you're going to be talking about a lot of things tonight that are going to be very important to the city in the future. Developers come, they develop what they're supposed to develop, what they're charged with developing, they make money, they go on down the road to their next project. And what we're left with is what we allow them to build. And, um, some of you, I don't know if any of you were here when we wrote the B-three codes, but, and some of you were just appointed recently. And what I would like to do, if anybody would like any of the, the B-three code, or the technical manual, or the pattern book, I have it here for you to refer to if you would like. And I also have the comprehensive plan. A lot of things to read. Some of you may not have read it, but it's very important what you're going to be doing here tonight. And, uh, I hope you don't do anything until you read and understand. It's a complex, um, it's a complex code, but it's, it's made to make sure that we don't wind up looking like some of the other cities that just allow development to come and go. And that's my statement on that. And I have a question about the agenda. You're have, you're listed for a bunch of, um, public hearings, but at the end, it says, "No board, commission, council action will be taken, no deliberations to be, will be held, and no board, commission, council business will be conducted." So, as a citizen, reading this, um, it's quite confusing as to why we're doing this. And there might be a technical reason why you can conduct the public hearings with this, but, um, if we want to keep the spirit of open government and public comment and public participation, we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I do have, I'll wait, uh, till each one of these for her. All right, that is it for citizen comments. All right, on to item three. We'd like to welcome, uh, our new member. Uh, Sylvia, are you going to handle it, or? All right.
Jeffrey Esses.
Yes.
Jeffrey, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, I'm a real estate agent with Stanberry Realtors here in town. And, uh, I was a, a band director for twenty-five years, and I've done real estate now for ten. So, I'm glad to be a part of this and really looking forward to serving the city any way I can and the citizens.
Did you say band director? For what school?
I was at Bastrop.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome.
All right, well, welcome aboard and welcome back. All right, on to item four A. Consider action to approve minute meetings from the September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, and October thirty of two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I propose to accept as written, have read it.
A second?
We have a first and a second. Can we call for roll, please?
Yes, Christopher Toth.
Hi. Are you going to, do you mean to say I'm here, or do you want me to vote on the approval of the minutes?
Uh, voting on approval. Uh, Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Esses.
Yes.
Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Uh, on to item four B. Hold a public hearing to consider enact to amend section six point three point zero zero five alleys and driveway locations. A, to clarify the intent. B, to remove alley entrance as the preferred means of vehicular access. C, remove text related to the benefits of alleys. Uh, this amendment seeks to, A, clarify the intent of the code. B, allow residents the flexibility to create or construct parking in the area between the street and the front facade of their home, and gives the option to developments who do not want to create alley entrances. And C, remove text reference to the perceived benefits of alleys. So...
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, tonight, we're going to first talk about relationships within the code itself and why these particular amendments are here in front of you, because it would seem awkward that we're talking about parking as we talk about ADUs, as we talk about impervious cover. But trust me, they're all interwoven. Um, development is a super complex item, um, but it is also, um, from a, uh, planning standpoint, a very linear process. And everything has an interdependent relationship to one another, so when we talk about one, we're going to talk about the other. Today, the items related to parking, um, some of these have, uh, little to no impact, especially number, uh, four and, uh, five, because it is clearing up some language. And again, when we touch one, there's text in the other codes that relate to the other that those have to be amended. So, um, really, this first item is to allow, um, uh, to amend the section alleys and driveway locations. It seeks to clarify the intent of the code, allowing residents to keep the flexibility to create or construct parking in the area between the street and the front facade of the house. Um, currently, the B-three code does not allow that, and I know folks in the audience are going to say, yes, it does. I'm going to bring up the code here in just a second. So, this is, um, the first item. We can come back to a vote here in just a second, or you can open public comment. I want to show you the relationship to each one of them. The, um, six three oh-five alleys and driveway locations, this is really just removing the text that says alley entrances are the preferred method of entry. Um, I think preferred is relative, and when we, uh, embark on development and most of the things that are going to come to you that are different, will come through you through a planned development district, which will allow you to dictate how things should flow as it relates to traffic, as it relates to the street congestion, as it relates to those street intersections. And so, the proposal is, again, to allow parking in the front of the home. The, um, second, six three oh-six parking, is to remove parking maximums to allow residential garage facades to begin in the first layer and allow parking in the first layer. So, today, you can't have a traditional parking garage in the front of your home with a standard two-pad parking. It's required to be moved to the rear, what we call the second layer of the home, which is beyond the front facade of the house and/or the third layer, and/or return alley entrance. Um, obviously, we had some non-conforming issues that the commission cleaned up about six months ago, and we resolved it with a twenty percent rule, meaning if, uh, your house was damaged more than fifty-one percent, you would have normally had to come up to code. And we saw that example again and again on Barbara Way, where the home had to be amended and the alley entrance created, or the rear wrap garage created. Um, this would allow folks to still continue to park in the front facade of their home. And then, this is the technical manual, Ms. Moore referred to this also. Um, the code is made up of the code, a technical manual, and a pattern book. The pattern book related to the Iredelle District and was recommendations. The commission has yet to vote, and we do plan to bring it back to you. One of the things, uh, Mr. Escobar asked at the last workshop, if we would bring the pattern book as a recommendation as opposed to a requirement. Not opposed to bringing it as a recommendation, if it is, again, a planned development district, because the law does not allow us to dictate aesthetics. Sorry, we got to go to Austin and get that changed. Uh, again, this is also to allow, so there's a, a bunch of sections in the code. These are, all relate to parking in the first layer. Um, these were previous conditions, so as you can see, this looks like the standard cross-section of what you would see down Main Street, what you would see on Pecan, larger lot subdivisions, the driveway headed way toward the back, the house set really far back. The difference in the code today is the houses are meant to be situated very close to the road, um, to encourage quote-unquote walkability and encourage that interaction between the public and the private realm. Today, this is existing on, uh, Main Street and on Jefferson Street. Uh, under the prior code, if this was destroyed with fire, et cetera, et cetera, this would not have been, been able to rebuild there. Again, you did a non-conforming change, which essentially hollowed out that section of the code and allows the staff to drop a pin at that address and take a radius of two-hundred feet, and if everybody looks like this within two-hundred feet, you're allowed to put this back. This also, in the code, some of the restrictions that are being presented today, removing the ability to park in the front, um, will directly impact Riverside Grove. Right now, this is listed as a legal non-conforming, because we don't allow parking in the front. Uh, HOAs, those kinds of things, will now have to come through a planned development, uh, process also, because this isn't just allowed by right. That street cross-section, not allowed. Here's the code that says residential garage facades must begin in the third layer. That means behind the house. That means you need a long driveway behind the house. Um, onsite surface parking must be located in the second layer and third layer of each lot as defined by the place type standards. Meaning, again, you can't park in front of the house, you have to park, um, middle of the way or toward the very back. Uh, the argument to that is, again, articulating the house is closer to the sidewalk, cars are going to go away, so we need to plan for that. Um, wider streets and asphalt create heat zones. Uh, streets are very expensive to maintain, they're more costly for the city, and we need mass transit, so we need to go ahead and plan for that now. The commission has a few options to consider tonight. You can, uh, amend the code to allow parking in the first layer, even if the structure is affected more than fifty percent due to damage, that's the non-conforming use exemption. Allow the code to, uh, amend the code to give the homeowner the option to park in any layer on the lot, or leave the code as is. So, we'll go back to those first. There you go. You can open those public hearings.
All right, we're going to open the public hearing, and we are going to start with item four B. Um, yeah. What they want to do for B? Just, it's all the same, right? Yeah. Okay. So, we're going to start with Jen Lucas, please. Please give us your name and address, ma'am.
This feels so official.
It is.
I'm Jen Lucas, I live at seventeen oh-nine Garfield Street.
And can we, uh, y'all, sorry, Jen, you have three minutes, huh?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, the last meeting was my first planning and zoning meeting. Um, I very intentionally, when I moved to Bastrop two years ago, was like, I'm not going to get involved in anything. Let me just get to know the town. You know, it's easy to come in and I'm a, I'm a doer, and I start to get involved. So, I'm just starting to ask questions and figure out how things work and, um, and I, I've worked in nonprofit my whole career. I just lived in Austin for twenty years. Uh, before that, I lived in Dayton, Ohio, that's where I grew up. Dayton died as a town, it's like, kind of a little Detroit, and then I moved to Austin, and all of a sudden, it was this boom town. And working, trying to work in, 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 in public service in a town that was just getting more and more, um, unaffordable was horrifying. And all, and watching all the people who had grown up there not be able to live there, people not being able to age there, people's kids not being able to stay there because they couldn't afford housing. So, me coming to Bastrop, I, when my husband and I just bought our house here, and I was, you know, aware, oh, you can build an ADU. And for me, that's exciting, as just being a little teeny part of a solution, of being able to build a small space that somebody can live in and stay in Bastrop or age in Bastrop. And then, sure, maybe someday I have family that needs to live there or whatever, but really, for me, it's to provide housing, um, and especially for workforce. I've worked in workforce development for a very long time. And, and since the last meeting, I've talked to two restaurant owners on Main Street, and unprovoked, they both talked about the struggle being, where do people live? So, when I saw in this that now I would have to, I live in a eleven hundred square-foot house, I already have a, a giant shed in the back that's on a foundation that I don't need. And so, I've been like, oh, we could, you know, eventually, I'm not planning to do this soon, but now it seems I would have to have four parking spaces at my house, two for my house and two for the ADU. Even though it's a very small house, I'd be building a very small ADU. It just seems extreme. Um, and I'm just hoping that we're not making huge and rushing into making huge decisions that are going to stop neighbors like me from being able to create small, affordable spaces. So, I know we need emergency vehicles to get through and that they're, that it's complex. I just hope that we're thinking through it all, because, um, this is a fact, Austin is the most economically segregated city in the United States, and so many of the social problems come from that, where you end up with just sprawl. And so, all the rich people live here, and all the median people live here, and all the poor people live here, and it becomes very difficult to have a functioning society like that. So, I hope Bastrop doesn't turn into that, that we can keep people living mixed up together. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you all for responding to my emails that I sent you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. So, real quick, I have three here who wish to not speak, and they're on all four, uh, four item, items four B through four F. So, I'm just going to go through those real quick before we go to the next person to speak. Uh, we have Melinda Larson. Uh, she lives, uh, here in Bastrop. She does not wish to speak, but, uh, record her support for items four B through four F. Jared Herska. I think I got that correct. He lives here in Bastrop, does not wish to speak, but he says, please record his support for items four B through four F. Cheryl Long, she lives here in Bastrop, she does not wish to speak, but please record her support for items four B through four F. Thank you for your votes of support. Uh, up next, we have Pablo Serna. He wishes to speak on item four B.
Hello, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Uh, please state your name and address, and, uh, you have three minutes.
All right. Pablo Serna, eleven oh-four Hill Street, Bastrop, Texas. And, um, I do wish to speak on, on a, a number of these, and I've been a little bit public about why, why I feel some of these things are undermining some of the good work that a lot of people have done. And so, um, I'm not doing it just because I have some personal issue with anybody. I'm doing it because there's some background that, that I think is kind of important that we should all understand, especially you as P and Z, as I was there at one time, and I know other people have been here, that, um, there was a lot of thought that went into this. And I know I heard Sylvia's arguments about, um, opposition to some of the reasoning that, that she had there. And I, what I didn't hear, and I would like to hear her talk about some more, is what is in the, um, executive summary. And if y'all don't have printouts, you should ask for them. I got one, and I asked for it, so you should, you can get yours. And mark it up. Um, it says here, "The executive summit to create a fiscally sustainable community through land use standards that are authentically Bastrop and geographically sensitive." And I want to underline the word authentically for you. Like many of you, um, I, I came to Bastrop. I moved from another place, Austin, in my case, but I grew up, uh, in Corpus Christi and camped out at the state park and just fell in love with the town and always remembered Bastrop. And without a doubt, a lot of people, the first thing they say is that beautiful historic town. And so, when we got started on doing these codes, we wanted to protect that. And the way you do that is you put in a, what's called a form-based code, which is, as it's stated, form-based. So, you define the form. You say, park here, park there. And when you say park, let me clean that up a little bit, and we probably should clean that up. We're talking about constructing structures, and I think she has it in there, underlined it, it's in B, it says, "Allow residents the flexibility to create, create or construct parking." So, create or construct refers to a physical thing, uh, not necessarily just an open pad, but in sense of carport or a structure. So, we do want to be clear on where that can occur. Uh, as far as parking on your driveway, the code does not prohibit that anywhere, that you cannot park on your driveway. Driveway's a different kind of item. But definitely constructing parking, we wanted to replicate a traditional historic pattern that's found throughout the historic area of Bastrop, where the garages are set back in the first layer, at least twenty feet, that you can approach with the driveway. So, on some of the examples, you can drive around and see that, you can drive right past the corner of the house, and then within twenty feet, which happens to be the distance of the length of a vehicle, you can park your vehicle in the driveway. And the garage facade can be right there, which is at the end of the second layer and the beginning of the third layer. So, uh, would encourage you to look at that lot layer diagram and really dive into that, because that's one method, not just alleys.
All right, thank you, sir, for your time. All right, you're up again. You're here for item four B. You get three minutes apiece. I, I'm just going list by list, so. Yeah, you get three minutes apiece. Do you want to? We can, we can wait till the next one? Sure, sure. Uh, yeah, no, that, I, I want you to be able to get it out how you want. All right, so we'll wait till the next one for you. Thank you. And that one there. That's four B one, okay. Um... So, I need to give this one back. He went, because he went on for one, that was the first item. Okay. So, um, Cecilia Serna, would you like to wait till item three, four B three, or would you like to speak now? Okay. Come on up.
Good evening, my name's Cecilia Serna, I reside at eleven oh-four Hill Street.
All right, three minutes starting.
Okay, I just wanted to go over the way the wording is on the agenda, where it continues to say parking not allowed and parking not allowed. Parking is allowed, it's just, as Pablo Serna said, um, the building structure. And I just want to make sure that if you're going to be deciding on some of these action items, that at least the wording should be clear. And also, it, as with any business, there's onboarding when you're new. And I wonder if any of you were given the actual manuals on what to under, um, how to read the code, or if any of you have actually read the code? Because it is not, um, easy to read, but if you're making decisions, you really need to understand it a little bit better. And as new people get on the commission, um, I really think there needs to be some sort of onboarding, some explaining, some background done. I just have issue with, if you're expected to make decisions, then you should have all the information that you need, and you need- and you need to understand the code a little bit better than listening to a really quick summary of what it is and make sure that you understand it just as well as our city manager does. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Jody Smith. 4B5. All right, I was going to say you didn't put if you wanted to speak or not. That's what I was going to get to, it's here. So she wants to speak, 4B5. Okay. What I have this, all right. So that's it for the first one. We can close that? Well, no, we still got it. Yeah, we're going to close it on number one and we're going to open it up on 4B2. Oh, let me read through it thoroughly. Hold a public hearing to consider and act to amend section 6.3.006, parking to remove parking maximums and allow residential garage facades to begin in the first layer and allow parking in the first layer. The amendment seeks to allow residents the flexibility to continue to park in the first layer. The area between the street and the front facade of their home, build a garage facade fence facing the street within required building setbacks and allow for parking on the garage driveway in the first layer.
All right, so I'm going to read specifically from the code, section 6306. On-site surface parking must, not shall, not may, must be located in the second layer or the third layer on each lot as defined by the place type standard. The amendment seeks to allow residents the flexibility to allow parking in the first layer. So that's the section of the code we would be amending.
Question really quick.
Yes.
Are, are there any exceptions to the rule currently to allow parking in the first layer at all? Like, it's totally not possible currently?
So I'll give you the example of the homes behind City Hall. There was a widening of the street that took place. There's some homes that were remodeled. They don't have access to the back alley. There's nothing. We don't have any parking standards per se. So when they came in and asked for a pad to be placed to be able to get into their house and park into their house, the initial discussion was no, you can't do that. Well, they did not want to park on the street. That is a street that's bar ditches and to park there would, you'd be in a bar ditch. So you'd have to come through a variance process. When you guys did the, a few months ago, when you did the non-conforming change, if somebody wants to park or is constructing something that they want to park because the home was demolished or damaged, et cetera, beyond 50%, so long as we drop a pin and you pull 200 feet and everybody else around there looks like that, they can continue to do that. So we gave some administrative relief.
If I wanted to build a home on a lot, for example, downtown Bastrop, I would not be able to build a parking structure, whether it's a pad or whatever, in the first layer?
No, not according to, not according to the way the code is written.
Residential garage facades must begin in the third layer. Must, not shall, not may, must. That's at the very back of the house. On-site surface parking must be located in the second or third layer.
So if you submit a development plan where you're, you don't have a parking garage, you don't have anything, but you've got a surface, then, you know, at some point, it's a code enforcement issue. I've not, I've not put the code enforcement issue on it because it's just such a crazy thing to have to try to enforce.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And one thing I brought up to Kennedy was that the parking maximums are per P5. Just make sure everybody knows that. That's not where people can park six or seven cars in their front yard. Okay? That's kind of how it reads right now, to remove parking maximums. If you don't know the code and you haven't read it, and she helped me out with that, that's for businesses.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have one person who wishes to speak on 4B2 and that's Pablo Serna. We're not going to ask you to say your name. You just throw your name out there. We don't need the extras, get you five more seconds of time.
And thank you. Just to clarify the discussions that happened at the time when this was being proposed by the consultant. It was based on the historic pattern that we have existing. If you drive around historic Bastrop, I'm sure many of you have, what you see are garages set back from the face of the building, from the face of the primary residence. There is driveways, though. See, a lot of the Bastrop was developed before the car was such a, you know, an important thing as it is now. And so what you have are driveways that go to a garage either way in the back or right in the front. And so you'll see a variety of things happening. But because we needed to do, again, form-based code is trying to give stipulations to developers one way or the other. What we were trying to avoid is what's referred to as a snot-nosed house or where the garage is the first layer, that's right on the frontage. And I want to clarify what the difference, you know, a frontage is in the first layer. So because if you, the way it's written right now, if you allow any construction in the first layer, the first layer goes all the way to the property line. So someone could literally build a garage one inch off of the property line of the sidewalk, the way it's written right now, if you adopt it. So if you're going to make a change, go back to frontages, okay? There has to be some front setbacks. Well, we use the layering system to do that. The first layer is grass, it's green. Because if you look at a lot of historical houses, that's the pattern. Then we set it back. But we didn't want to set it all the way back, so we set it back only 20 feet on the driveway approach. Yes, one option is the alley. That is a preferential approach, but it's not the only one. So on a driveway approach, you can drive all the way up to your garage, 20 feet back from the corner of the house. And we saw that as two cars parking in tandem. One 20 feet in front of the garage and another 20 feet behind it, which would represent the first layer. So that was reasonable and it replicated a number of historical patterns that are there.
You got one minute.
Okay.
Just, I throw that one up for you.
So, wanted to give the background on that. If I had to advise anybody, I would definitely clean up the language between what is surface parking and can you park on your driveway? And all you have to do is say, yeah, you can park on your driveway. People do it all the time. They've been doing it for years. We're not trying to stop people from parking on their driveway. What we're trying to do is regulate where that parking structure occurs. And a parking structure is usually the form of a carport, a garage, or something like that. And so we wanted to push that back. That was the whole intent. And it was to avoid what you see a lot right now, which is the garage first and then the houses in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. We don't have anymore for that one. Do you have anything to add?
Sure, so this is an example of a subdivision that wouldn't be allowed anymore. Riverside Grove, Bastrop Grove, County Creek, none of that would be allowed anymore. And Mr. Serna, in the P3, the setback is 10 feet.
And so, not 20 feet. I mean, the whole purpose of the B3 code is to encourage walkability. All of those building facades are moved to the front of the house. That is evidenced by what you see on Blakey Lane. Anybody who's been driven through the apartments and is wondering why they're so close to the street, that's why, this code.
All right, thank you. We'll close the public hearing on item 4B2. And now we'll hold a public hearing. This is item 4B3. We'll hold a public hearing, consider and act to amend the B3 technical manual, SEC 2.1.006, parking areas to allow for parking in the first layer. This amendment seeks to allow residents or developments to park in the area between the house and the street. Parking in the first layer is currently not allowed in the B3 code. Right. So. Okay, we're, well, you're, you wish to speak on this item here, so... Do you want your three minutes? Well, can you please come up front to the mic and utilize your three minutes? Thank you.
And this is only, this is only important because you're about to talk about the setback and the frontage. And I want to clarify, so I know you said it's 10 feet. And I want to tell you right now, on it says eight feet minimum, okay? Minimum is not the maximum. What you do, and I've done houses here and I've done some houses, so for some of you people out there, you have to take the average setback of the adjacent houses on either side. And if they're far back, you have to meet that same setback line. You cannot put at eight feet or 10 feet, just to clarify that. So it's important that you understand what the difference between the setback, the first layer and frontage.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we're going to close the public hearing on 4B3. We're going on to item 4B4. Hold a, open up the public hearing to hold a, hold a public hearing to consider and act to amend SEC 6.3.003, building placement 3A to allow parking in the first layer. This amendment seeks to allow residents or developments to park in the area between the house and the street. Parking in the first layer is currently not allowed in the B3 code.
Excuse me, what I'm seeing on my screen isn't what I'm seeing on... Not what you are seeing on the screen. Lot occupation in the P3, build to line 10 feet to 25 feet. That's on page 18. Are we on number three?
Four.
Okay. Building placement to allow parking in the first layer. Again, we're going to beat it to death, what you can and can't do, what is, maybe perhaps what the intent of the code was as it was written is not what made it into, into the code and is not what staff is currently struggling with in terms of enforcement. And again, we'll go through, Mr. Serna's correct. There was a significant setback. The houses were set further back. You can see the garage there or you can see no garage in this particular structure. This is a pretty long drive back and so we'll have conversations about impervious cover, et cetera, et cetera, later on. Those were previous conditions. Gone through these pictures. Again, this no longer allowed specific sections of the code. So we're, we've kind of made a circular reference. So I'm willing to open it up to the commissioners, any commissioner who has any questions.
When you say it's no longer allowed, it's really no longer allowed, it's grandfathered what exists.
What exists, yes, is grandfathered, which is we...
It's just not new construction.
Correct. It's grandfathered, it's what we call legal non-conforming.
Thank you.
We have anyone else? All right. Mr. Serna, would you like to come up and speak on item 4B4?
Okay, so there is a, and you brought up an example of a, if, what if a house is burned down and they have to rebuild? What does the code allow? Correct. They, they, if they're in a neighborhood where all of the garages are on that first layer, right? They're inside there. We certainly would want to let them match up. Well, I know we're not doing that, so we need to clean that up.
Yeah, we did. We just passed a, you beat me up on that one. We passed a legal non-conforming exemption.
Okay, that's true. So, so we have a way to handle that. My issue with the way it's written right now, building in the first layer, I think if we're going to start doing that, we need to stop thinking about layers necessarily. Because again, the layers are unique to form-based code. If we wanted to build in those layers, we should say the second layer, you know? Because the first layer goes again from the property line, which is right up against the sidewalk or the street, to the front of the house. That's the first layer. It ends, begins at the property line and ends at the, at the first line of the building. If we're going to make the first line of the building, the garage, which it sounds like the examples that she's shown you has, has done, then the first layer is still empty. You still want to just have a driveway there. So I would advise that you do not build in the first layer. You build in the second layer. And we said build 20 feet back. That's the depth of the second layer, for your information. So if you're going to do that, then make that change, build in the second layer. I would suggest you go back a little bit, as much as possible. But again, builders will, will make the adjustment if they can come up to the second layer because that's what you have now. It's what you see in a lot of houses right now. They start at the frontage or the setback, the front yard setback, which is usually 20 to 25 feet. And so that is the setback. Our first layer is all of that setback, so. And I'll just say, if I have a second, infill development. So infill development is where you go into a historic neighborhood, which is what's going to happen to Bastrop, I promise you that. In the next 10, within the next 10 years, infill development will happen like that. They will mow down an old house and they will put up a new structure. Austin had that happen to them in a number of neighborhoods and they came in in 2006 and put what was called the McMansion ordinance because they had to regulate mini mansions going right up against small cottages. So this will happen. So what you're doing right now is very critical. We took the time to try to figure that out with the form-based code and we tried to control it with impervious cover. You can control density with impervious cover. You can also stipulate where the parking happens. If we have a disagreement on where that happens, work on that part of it. Don't just throw the whole baby out with the bathwater. My recommendation, what we have is pretty good. It'll help us grow Bastrop more authentically. That was the goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Scott, you have something to say?
Yeah, so I think I'm starting to understand a little bit where his hangup is. It does say that the garage facades will begin in the first layer. The first later, first layer is where the beginning of the lot starts to, the setback essentially, correct? So are you intentionally trying to have garages being built in that first layer?
Nope.
Okay, so why, okay. So why, I guess that's why the wording is a little confusing. Why does the wording say that it is to allow residential garage facades to begin in the first layer, not, and not begin in the second layer or leave it as is?
The facade of the garage can begin in the second layer, but it's really stipulated as a setback. And when we look at the table that I showed you, those setbacks are 10 to 25 feet. Best laid intentions, perhaps to 20 feet, but that's, that's not what's written in the code. And so again, intent versus what we're actually having to execute and actually having to enforce is a hot mess. This section of the code is very specific. It says no onsite surface parking, none.
Yes.
So if you park, if you build the garage in the second layer, where are you going to park your car? According to this, you have to put it inside the garage. You're not allowed to be in that first layer.
Absolutely. So I don't think the issue is whether or not we should allow parking in the front. I think we're all in agreeance that parking should be allowed in the first layer. I think where, where he was saying the hang, the hangup is, is this is saying, just as it's worded in, in 4B2, to allow the residential garage facades to begin in the first layer. And I think that's where his concern was. Would someone be able to interpret, I'm able to put my house essentially at the very front of my lot, ignoring setbacks? Or they would, so that would they be subject to setbacks? Or also would we need to change the verbiage to not necessarily allow garages in the first layer? Just allow surface parking in the first layer?
Sure, the commission is welcome to make an amendment to 4B2 and instead of saying to remove parking maximums, it should say allow residential garage, garage facades to begin in the second layer, but allow parking in the first layer.
Yeah, I think that's good. Is that what you were going for?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, I saw that there was a confusion, I, I didn't think he was arguing against parking.
You are welcome to make an amendment to that, and then that'll be, we would vote on the stated amendment.
Okay, um, may I ask you why that you guys put, that it starts in the first layer? Was there any reasoning behind that, or were you just concerned about the parking location?
We're just concerned about the parking location.
Okay, but we can still accomplish the same goal by allowing it to park in the centers.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, important.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Real quick.
We got progress.
Real quick.
Go ahead.
Okay, so on, on number two, down there in the italics, it says, "Build a garage facade facing the street within required building setbacks." So, every lot has a survey, and on that survey, it tells you your setbacks and your building lines, and all of that stuff is, is there, and you cannot build in that area. You can't build in your utility easements. You have to build behind those lines, okay? So, it is kind of here, at least that's the wording they're gonna change it to, from what I'm reading. You're gonna change it to where it says, "Build a garage facade facing the street within required building setbacks." So, it's already there.
Well, so, the, the text, staff's intent, the text is there, but he's correct, you would need to amend the 6306 parking.
Right.
Yes.
And that's what y'all wanna do?
Yes, that's, yes.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think it was just confusing with the verbiage saying that the facade would begin in the first layer, 'cause then it's like, okay, are you contradicting yourself and ignoring the setbacks or whatever? So, just clarification on that, that's all.
Yeah, keep that in your mind for later.
Make sure somebody wrote that down.
Well, well, was that a motion?
All right.
I think Jordan's got it. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, so we'll go back to one, and you can take your motions and votes on one, two, three, four. Yes.
Right, that's, that's a close to public hearing. All right, so, uh, you're saying we need to vote on those now, or I could continue through?
One, two, three, four, yes. You close the public hearing.
Yes, so, so the public hearing is closed, and I'm gonna open up the public hearing for five. Yes, yes, right, so we can, do we, do we need to vote on those now, or we can wait on the end? So, that's what I was, I was...
Let's do the first four. Go ahead and do a vote on that, and then we'll open up the public hearing for the fifth item.
So, I was looking at Jordan, waiting for him, 'cause he's putting his stuff together over here. That's, that's what I was doing, y'all.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it, 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 the item, Jordan, should include a motion to with an amendment of blank.
You ready? Fire away?
I guess my first question would be, what would be the appropriate language to put in there, so there isn't any contradiction in the interpretation of it?
Yeah, so, I would, um, read the item like it is, but instead of on that second part of that sentence after the comma, "Allow residential garage facades to begin in the second layer," but allow parking in the first layer.
Yes, so, for clarification for everyone here, where does the second layer begin normally?
Midway, middle of the house, in the back?
Okay.
After the build-to line.
So, for clarity, is the intent to allow the garage to be in line with the front facade? 'Cause maybe if that's the intent, you can simplify it in that matter, and say that a garage is allowed to be constructed in alignment with the front facade, meaning that the beginning of the structure can also be the beginning of the garage.
So, but it's not just garages. As Mr. Cerner pointed out, it could be a carport, it could be whatever, so the structure...
Could we just say it's, the garage facade is built on the, uh, build-to line, or whatever it's called?
No, 'cause that creates the issue he's talking about. The build-to line is closer to the street.
So, would it be appropriate just to say, to begin in the second layer? Or the facade is allowed to begin in the second layer? Okay.
Pablo, is that what you meant?
Yes.
That's allowed to encourage, yeah. A porch and an awning.
You have your motion?
Do you guys wanna start with one? First? Okay. Uh, a motion to approve item one.
A second?
Have a motion and a second?
Aye.
We gotta wait for her to call her names.
Oops.
Okay, Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
And David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item one passes unanimously, on to number two.
I would like to make a motion to approve item two with the amendment to change, um, allowing residential garage facades to begin in the second layer.
A second?
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Alondra. Okay, wait.
Can you go back? I think we're missing parts of that one, because one, you have a parking maximum, and then you have to also allow parking in the first layer. So, I think we need to hold off on this until we make a further decision.
Do we get a better motion from Scott?
So, do we, you, are you saying you want to not vote on it tonight, or you wanna rethink the amendment and present it again?
We need to rethink this amendment.
Okay.
Yeah. I wanna table, I would make a motion to table the very first motion and continue discussing it.
Uh, is there anything or any other information that we could talk about now to see, just in case? 'Cause we're trying to, I guess move on, yeah, move along, 'cause I don't want it to get tied up in court, per se.
So, two questions. What is our current parking maximum?
Not, not in the residential, you don't have any parking requirements in the residential. It's only in the P5.
Is the city's suggestion to remove the parking maximum from the language?
The parking maximum, yes, it's already conflicted. The, the code says, uh, should be market-driven.
Cool, thank you so much.
And then, was there anything else that was causing a table?
But didn't you need to add the...
So, so what does he need to add?
The, the parking in the first layer.
It's already on the, uh, it's already on the item, that's what it... Oh, I'm sorry, I was just reading the part that I wanted to change.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah, it's already there.
Okay, so Commissioner Scott would like to clarify and clean up his amendment and his motion.
Yes, um, would you like me just to read off the entire amendment, then?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay, that's a larger amendment.
So, I would like to, uh, have, I have a motion to approve item two, um, as long as, with the amendment to read, uh, parking to, remove parking maximums to allow residential garage facades to begin in the second layer and allow parking in the first layer.
That works. We have a motion and a second. Okay, now we can officially go through the roll.
Okay, Christopher Toth.
Yes.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yep.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Uh, Joshua Bingaman.
Yes.
Jordan Scott.
Yes.
David Barrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously, on to item three.
Need a motion?
Make a motion.
Based, as written.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, did you catch who that was?
No.
Second.
All right.
Uh, Chair, in the interest of time, can we take a unilateral vote?
A what?
Just a unilateral vote.
Sure, that works for me. I thought that's what we were trying to do, and then, you know, it was mentioned about one, but we can go two through six, they all kinda, or the rest of them that connect, right? Okay. So, so do we need to go through that one motion that Commissioner Moss did, or we could just...
No, you can just start the actual, or call for the vote, aye, nays?
Okay, can we call for the vote on the rest of, remainder of items three through six, please?
No, 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 no.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm three.
Three and four.
And four.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm rushing, trying to get, no, that's why I was going slow, I don't like to rush. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, pass these items. Thank you. All right. Now, on to item five, hold a public hearing to consider an act to amend section 6.3.006, A, B1 and B2, to allow shared parking and create onsite parking requirements. The amendment seeks to clarify, the intent of parking regulations clarify where our shared parking is allowed, where it does not create undue hardship as referenced in other areas of the code, and it also seeks to require a minimum of two parking spaces per dwelling unit to be included on the site, as opposed to placing all parking on the street, causing street congestion, and making it difficult for first responders to navigate congested streets.
So, this is one of those, this is one of those codes that, that is half dozen here, six in the other. So, the B3 code says parking shouldn't be a driver of site planning. So, this is differentiated from many businesses and core business types have a requirement per number of square foot of residential number of industrial space, et cetera, et cetera. The intent was to create a walkable, bikeable, and easily navigable city means all modes of transportation are available to reduce the reliance on the car. I think I agree with that entire statement, except reducing the reliance on the car. We don't have a mass transportation system, so that's, that's a lofty goal, maybe one we want to aspire to reach in the next 10 to 15. But, there's also a note in there that's, "Parking shall be market-driven." And so, when I don't have a table, and we don't have anything to go by, if a developer wants to bring in, other than in the P5, if they wanna bring in, you know, blank number of parking spaces, there's nothing for us to say no. So, other than the impervious cover ratio requirements, what we'd like to encourage, what we'd like to encourage is when you have, uh, different uses and different types, and let's say one of your uses is in the morning, and one of your uses is in the evening, that you can share the same parking ratio. There's no need to double and quadruple the amount of impervious cover that's on a site. So, we talked about this slide, and somebody heckled from the audience last time that, "Oh, that's not a wide enough street, that's, that picture is not depicting of that street." And I went back and forth and showed the public and private realm, and how this is depicted, and how this becomes very difficult for first responders to get in and out of the street. This is another example, this is a 35-foot lot product in Adleton, this is Weaver Lane, very much like Piney Creek Bend, you can't park on one side of the street, on any given day, the cars are parked. It's difficult, who's going to enforce? Is it city police? Is it the HOA? Is it anybody who's going to enforce? Then we move into what is Bastrop Grove, which is a hybrid system. They have a little bit of wider alleys, um, the shorter drive, some of these homes don't have any, uh, parking pads in the front or the back. And then these were our prior parking allowances. The picture on the right is directly from the prior code, and it shows the street widths. Again, you can see those trees are moved into what is called the private realm on the lot of the, of the homeowner and/or developer, and the picture on the left is an example of that in Riverside Grove. Now, after last week's meeting, I heard somebody say, "Those are ugly houses." Well, I think ugly's in the eyes of the beholder, and that's probably why the legislature said, "We can't regulate aesthetics." We keep talking about affordable housing, that means a different type of housing mix. And so, the argument I get is parking onsite is bad, that's less opportunity to build, you're gonna cause me to have impervious cover. It's not fiscally responsible, because greater density means greater taxable value to the city. Adding a required driveway increases impervious cover anyway, streets are expensive to maintain, wider streets equal untreated bad runoff into the river. And that, that's, that's one I agree with. So, options to consider, create an onsite parking requirement that allows mixed media, such as crushed granite, uh, partial driveways where it's only a portion of concrete, and you have sort of grass in the middle, um, or some other permeable surface, permeable pavers, for example. Um, you can amend the code to prior iterations, requiring a minimum of two spaces per lot. You can amend the code to prior re-iterations and ask us to come back with wider street standards, leave the code as is, requiring wider street standards, or just leave the code as is.
So, I have a question. Widening the streets, right, what does that do to the property owners?
It, nothing to the property owners, it's to the developer.
To the developer, okay.
Question, please?
Go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Carrillo. How do you define a, a parking space? I, I think it's an obvious question, but I think it's an, an important one. For instance, if you have a, a driveway going back to an ADU, is it sufficient that there is a parking space in front of the ADU, and there's a space immediately behind it?
Tandem parking is allowed, yes.
So, two cars back to back, that, that would be?
Yes.
Okay. So, essentially, what that means is, if you have a requirement for two parking spaces in, in the scenario I just talked about, you're not actually creating anything new, because you have to build, uh, a driveway back to the ADU anyway. So, that in and of itself qualifies for the two parking spaces?
Perhaps not all the way to the ADU, because we've got impervious cover, a, a different balance to work through, but yes, if you can park two cars, three cars, one right behind each other, that's fine. You just resolved that you can park in the first layer, so...
And if you use crushed granite or something like that, uh, you, you solve your impervious cover.
City of Austin gives a 50% credit for impervious cover.
Okay.
Uh, if you use crushed granite. And so, we're also looking at alternative methods when we come back to further drainage requirements, how we can give additional credits for those people who wanna do rainwater capture, for example, and rainwater reuse. There should be some credit for that, that's beneficial to all of us.
Agreed, yes.
And the more grassy space we have, I'm a big proponent of the drives that have the grass in the middle, all of the oils and things, as they pass through the grasses and the water, that creates its own filtration system, so we have less contaminants that make their way down, downstream.
All right, thank you.
Do we don't currently allow mixed media for parking in city limits?
No.
Correct? It's only, uh, pavement or concrete?
If you, if you put the other, it's still counted as impervious, 100%.
Anyone else? I gotta close the public hearing, sir. We gotta take comments also.
Yes, you have to open it, you have to open up a public comment, yes.
You got somewhere you gotta go? All right, so, we're gonna open up public comments. We have first up to speak on item 4B5, Ms. Jody Smith. Please state your name and address, ma'am. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Jody Smith, I live at 1909 North Main. Thank you, commissioners, for the time and effort you put into this. I know it is a volunteer gig, and I know it is demanding, so I appreciate your attention to all of this. Um, I am not a fan of adopting a parking minimum, but, um, especially because of its impact, negative impact on housing affordability, however, um, if you are going to adopt a parking minimum, I would suggest that you do it a different way, um, and use a formula-based approach, like what was, um, presented at your last meeting and in the last packet, um, rather than the flat number that is in tonight's packet, um, and it's on the, on the table this evening. The proposal right now that's in the red line is to have, to require two parking spaces minimum, regardless of the size of the home. That means that a studio, a one-bedroom, a 400, 700, 800,000 square foot home is going to have the same parking requirement as a 3,000 square foot, five-bedroom, six-bedroom home. And I don't think that's the right policy approach. Um, I have worked in public policy and public law all of my career, and I've read a lot of statute, I've read a lot of code, and I've intended to en- enforce a lot of it. And having, having a statute that is not proportional, that's not calibrated to the need or to the problem that it's intended to address, is, in my view, not the right or wise way of writing policy. You want the policy to be calibrated and proportionate to the issue that it is trying to solve. And so, it's, it's pretty obvious that, that, you know, the, the parking impact of a one-bedroom home is not the same as the parking impact of a five-bedroom home. And the proposal on the table tonight does not reflect that reality. So, if you are going to adopt a minimum, I would urge you to go back to what was previously presented for your consideration. Um, I believe that one...
You have one minute.
I believe that one was for one parking space for every two bedrooms. A lot of jurisdictions use a square footage, um, a formula, but at any rate, that is a formula-based approach that gets you a proportional approach to the problem that you're trying to solve, if you indeed to intend to adopt a minimum at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have Pablo Cerner.
Hey, thank you.
All right, sir, you got three minutes.
Okay, uh, just to give you the background on how this particular part of the code came Okay, just to give you the background on how this particular part of the code came about. As it stated, I was one of the first persons that said, "We need parking minimums." That's all I've ever worked with as an architect, and I was like, "How, where, where are they?" And in talking to the consultant, he made me realize developers aren't that stupid. They want people to park, but they don't want to have parking driving their development. And so, he said, you know, and I made a lot of sense. Matt is the, the, the develop, excuse me, the co-consultant. So, we do have, as somebody pointed out, parking already on your lot. It's in the parking garage. I mean, excuse me, it's in the garage. Or it's in your carport, or it's on the driveway. So you can clearly show, if you're doing a development, infill or otherwise, you can show that little car symbol on the driveway or in the garage, and you've satisfied that. So, I think there's something to think about, some value in not requiring parking on residential, but maybe doing so for commercial, but then I think commercial developers are not moving in that direction. They'd rather let them do that on their own. That's market-driven. So going back to residential infill, remember infill is where the house burned down, we're back, we're putting in a new house. If you do decide to make a certain ratio, I would do it per dwelling unit. So, a dwelling unit, a primary dwelling unit, as it's defined currently in our code, is the house. An accessory dwelling unit is the ADU. So, primary dwelling unit, two per dwelling unit is very common. You see that in a lot of municipalities. What you don't see are necessarily parking requirements for ADUs because ADUs sometimes are for grandma or for someone that isn't driving. But if you're gonna do one, don't do two per ADU. You'll end up with a bunch of parking that you could do, especially if you have a garage apartment, right? An ADU doesn't necessarily mean it's taking up square footage off of the ground. It could be a garage apartment above the garage. A lot of people do that to get a little extra income, but now they have to park. And now you had those, you can show it on the driveway, but we usually do it with one per ADU, two per dwelling unit. And then I think the last person mentioned two per bedroom. I can tell you right now, defining what a bedroom is, a lot of municipalities go in a hundred different directions. Does it have a closet? Is it on a hallway? Is it close to a bathroom? So just defining what a bedroom is gets to be problematic, and you get some creative people saying, "Well, that's not a bedroom. That's an office." "I only have one bedroom, my whole house." And so, there you go. So I think what we want to do is say, primary dwelling unit, two, two-car garage. ADU, one.
All right, thanks, sir.
That is a very fair proposal. Now, I will say that the last discussion we had, and it was followed by some uglier rhetoric, was it's hard to define a dwelling unit. It's hard to define what a bedroom is, and prior municipalities, if it had a closet, well, sometimes they don't have a closet, especially when you're retrofitting, especially when you are in the infill older homes. Some of those do not have a closet. So, two per uni, two per dwelling unit, and, you know, I disagree on the whole, "It's only four hundred, it's only gonna have one car because only one person's going to live there." That's not true. We know how expensive things are to live, and so it's normally going to be two people in even a small apartment. And those two people will typically have two cars, plus the bicycles and everything else to store. So, it was two per unit, and so that did not exclude the accessory dwelling unit is only having one. But I think that is a reasonable compromise, two for the primary and one for the accessory. Yes, sir?
Are we limiting the size of an ADU to one bedroom?
No.
Okay. Isn't, shouldn't it be tied to the size of the ADU?
Oh. That leads to-
Two and two.
Yeah, that, we begin to get into, we begin, again, you know, what part of the ADU is the living quarters? Is it, you know, if I converted the garage, how much of that is actually, you know, you, you get where I'm going.
What communities in Bashrop are allowed to have ADUs?
Right now, you're allowed by right unless your HOA says you cannot.
Right. So, we're just talking city proper? Because all the others have HOAs right now?
Correct.
So, we're talking about old Bashrop, right?
Correct.
That have garage apartments, things like that, we would, but they're grandfathered in.
Correct.
So it'd only be new ADUs that are being affected by this?
Correct.
And how many people come forward yearly and ask to put an ADU in their property in Bashrop?
I don't have that, I don't have that in front of me.
Is that, I wonder if it, is, is it necessary to change? Or, you know, if, if it's not that, I don't know, I shouldn't say that big a deal. I know it's a big deal to have parking. I don't want people parking on the street.
Here's the issue.
But that's the way it is.
Affordable housing is one thing.
Yep.
Providing a housing for caregivers to the major people that live in the house up front. Family members that need help. There's all kinds of reasons to do this, and I think you'll see more and more and more of that come, coming about. You know, having, having to tie it to the size makes sense. I mean, it's-
So, do you have a proposal on?
I do. Two, for each dwelling.
Two parking spots?
Kind of, it kind of covers everybody. And I think what, what will happen in that situation, it'll, it'll, it'll fix itself with whatever they build back there. If it's set for two, you know, you don't have to have two, two necessarily, but if it's one, one in the back, it's smaller than two, there'll only be one there.
Can y'all hear him in the back? Can you please speak into the mic, sir?
Why not?
Because you're not speaking into the mic.
Is his mic on?
It is on.
Okay.
I don't.
There we go. I'll get right on top of it here. So, like I said, it's, it's, it just makes sense to me, we have to pick a number. And it will kind of solve itself with how big they build back there. We don't, are we gonna regulate exactly what size it is? Compared, we could do that, but to, if it's two bedrooms, we put two cars. If it's one bedroom, do one car for an ADU.
The last, I believe when we were workshopping it, it was a, one and a half per bedroom, so a three-bedroom house would end up with, it was one and a half per two-bedroom, so a three-bedroom house would end up with a two.
Yep.
A question. So, garage spaces count as parking spaces, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, for an ADU that requires two spots, if it's a one-car garage, if it's a smaller ADU, one in the garage, one parked in front of the garage would be two. And for it to count as a parking spot, what type of coverage is required on the ground? Is it, is it just the space that's allowed for it, or do you have to put some sort of impervious or permeable cover on the ground to count it?
What do you mean, like not just driving up in your grass?
Not just driving up on the ground?
Right.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm thinking from a, like a, if you're requiring two parking spots, and then ADUs, and we're gonna get into like, like lot coverage and stuff like that, what are we, what are the requirements for something to count as a parking spot that's not inside a garage? Do we have, do you know off the top of your head?
No, I don't. So, it's gonna have to be some type of improved surface, but we're, we're not determining what type of surface yet. Again, I want to be able to give credit for crushed granite. I want to be able to give credit for permeable surfaces.
But there has to be an improved surface, per se.
For it to be, yeah.
All you have to have is a, is a simple driveway back there.
Sure.
As it goes back.
Right, just something that identifies a parking spot, right?
And again, the whole issue is, the whole issue is to get the cars off of the street with the congestion. That, that's the whole purpose of-
That shouldn't be difficult with the driveways because people are gonna build in the back of their property anyway, so they'll have yards between it. It'll take care of itself.
What do we do about construction equipment, parking? People who are, have a business and they have a delivery truck, trailer, whatever it may be, dump truck? Does that fall under the realm of these parks?
That's a, that's a good question because, like, those won't necessarily fit into the driveways, and people do have that for a way of living. What do we do with those, or where are we having those parked?
Only the HOA have rules as to where they can or can't go. The rest of the streets in town, they're public streets. Yeah. There's a noise ordinance, there's, you know, Jake breaking, but-
So basically, right outside of it being an HOA, it's a public street, so you can park there. Even with us having the regulations of where you need to park, they still have that right unless they're in the HOA.
Correct.
I just don't think it's so honorous to have two parking spaces per dwelling. I'll make a motion to do that.
Hold on.
Yes?
Okay, wait, wait.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We can't, yeah, I can't do that. Sorry about that.
In the public comment period or the public hearing period? Please refrain from addressing the commission directly.
Did, did we ever open the public hearing?
Yes, we did, and, and I was gonna be, get ready to close it because we don't have any more comments on that, that anyone that signed up. One more, except for now she has one, we're gonna allow her to come up here, risen? Okay.
You can come up to the podium to speak.
But please try to remember, everyone, we do have ample about time for you to sign up for comments. And I know things may pop up in the beginning of your head when you're in the back, but try to have those things prepared, just like you like us to.
You changed this on us. I mean, I was in complete agreement. I was agreeing with what Pablo said, complete agreement. I think that's absurd to have somebody put a road back to their ADU, Deborah Jones, sixteen oh six Pecan Street. Having them to put, especially downtown, the way that it's structured down there. I adamantly disagree.
Thank you. You can come up for the public comment.
You can come up.
The, the public hearing is still open.
Okay.
And then, we have an, a council item that we have to, do I have to close this, zoning item, sorry, then I have to close this. Once, and we're gonna have to table this after Ms. Lucas's comments and then get back to it.
Thank you for letting me come back up. Jen Lucas, again, at seventeen oh nine Garfield Street. I just, like, I'm thinking about this from the point of view of not a developer, not someone trying to put the big monstrosity on my property, but to create a small unit for someone who doesn't have a lot of income, and to have two parking spaces for that is just such a huge barrier. It just, it just seems crazy, and there's not even like a big benefit that it's, that the homeowners are gonna get from it. You know, it's just, I can't figure out the why on this. If we're having a bunch of streets that have too much traffic and you can't get an ambulance through, I can see this, but this seems like we're solving a problem that doesn't exist. So if we could, you know, just not require two parking spaces for an ADU, for me, that just falls in line with common sense. And I haven't heard a good argument for it, other than, I mean, I hear you saying like, "It's not that hard," but why? Why do we need that? It just seems like a really unnecessary hurdle for someone to create a, another small, affordable unit in, in Bashrop. Especially in town where people might not need a car, or they, you know, they might be able to walk to their, to their job. So, it, it just feels like it goes in line with the feel of the Bashrop that we're trying to protect. There's ADUs all over my neighborhood, and there's not a problem. There's not a parking issue ever where I live. So, thank you for letting me say that.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And, do we need to go do a motion on tabling the rest of the items?
You can take the vote if you're ready to take the vote, or-
Okay, we have one more, so it's not closed. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just one more question. A, a normal driveway that say it's a two-car garage, and the two parking spots in the garage count as two, that takes care of the main dwelling, and then the driveway takes care of the, seeks to require a minimum of two parking spaces. Now, if a house just has a single-car driveway, they're, they're the ones that might have a little bit of an issue, right?
Yes, yes.
So, if you have a driveway already, you can use that
Yep.
instead of having to build something in your backyard. Is that correct?
Yes. The snout houses everybody hates, that's, they come with four parking spaces, two in the garage and two on the pad.
I get the feeling, I think people think they have to build a driveway and a road going to their backyard where their ADU is. Is that what we're confused about?
So, we talked about tandem parking earlier. We talked about being able to park one car in front of the other, and in the example that is-
So, this isn't a requirement to do a, a improved driveway or anything? No, it's just regarding parking?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. But it's already there.
So, I'll give you an example. This particular house on Main Street. On Jefferson Street, that is-
So, are we, are we adamant about having two spaces for ADUs? No?
I am. I think it's a great idea.
So-
Mike, Mike, gotta talk to Mike.
Two people that can live-
Gary, they can't hear you in the back.
If you have a bedroom, one bedroom ADU back there, two people can easily live in it. I'll give it's four hundred square feet, three hundred square feet. They can, two people can easily do, and they're more than likely gonna have cars. So, it, it's so easy to, to meet the requirement of two pe, two parking places for one bedrooms.
I'm just kind of like thinking of the geographical area of Bashrop, though. There aren't a lot of locations to put ADUs, and the only place that I personally could see only requiring one parking spot for an ADU is if the ADU was built up against the street and that there was no garage. It was just like a stacked building with no garage. But, and most of those places would be built on, in like side lots and stuff, and if our, the problem is, is keeping cars off the street. I mean, may, maybe having a car on the street in a, on a side street isn't really gonna be a big concern. It's not like they're gonna be building ADUs right up against the street, like on Pecan Street or Main Street or something. Most ADUs are gonna have a, a single-car driveway at minimum that should be sufficient to cover parking, even if it's not an improved surface, right?
So, remember, right now, we have no parking minimums, and so, so the other half of this-
What I'm just saying is, I, I think it would be fair to drop the parking minimum for ADUs to one because I don't personally see it being an issue. Let's just say there are two cars. If one car on ADU has to park on the street-
I think that's a good meet in the middle. I think that's a good start.
There's not a lot of ADUs in Bashrop. If there's three extra cars on the street because of it, I mean, it's not gonna prevent a fire truck from getting down the road.
Okay, so the motion in front of us on number five, it just says to allow shared parking and create onsite parking requirements. So, somebody, when they make the motion, are gonna, has to, has to add that wording?
So, we talked about the tandem. That's also shared parking, right? So, it's, it is, oh gosh, somebody make a motion.
So, we just need to change the, the wording to say two parking spaces per primary dwelling unit and then one parking space per ADU.
Correct.
Correct.
I agree.
Yeah, we could take a motion on that if somebody puts forward a motion.
Can we, can we get a motion on that, please?
I'll do that.
What is it?
What?
Well, we need to wait-
Nobody can hear me anyways, whatever does it make?
Well, we can hear you up here.
Two for the primary dwelling and one for the ADU. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. You got who the second was? Commissioner Bearro?
Thank you.
All right. Can you call for a roll, please?
All in favor.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. All right. We are closing that.
We're gonna skip to the zoning case right quick.
Okay.
All the other items will be tabled, so while I'm doing that, will you take a motion to table?
We need to make a motion to table the remainder of items so we can go through the zoning.
So, the proper motion would be to table items four C, four D, and four E for the next planning and zoning meeting. We're still gonna do four F.
Unfortunately, I want to make a motion to table items four C, four D, four E, so that we can continue to four F.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna open up the- All right, you ready? All right, gonna hold a public hearing, open up the public hearing to consider and act on a recommendation for the zoning concept scheme for the FM nine-six-nine retail center, changing the zoning of ten-point-five-six acres out of the Nancy Blakey survey abstract ninety-eight, located west of FM nine-six-nine, R-three-zero-zero-nine-four, within the city of Bashrop. From P-two rural to P-five core as shown in the attachment. Ms. Kennedy?
Good evening, Commissioner. So, this is a zoning case before you today. Oh, this is. You can see the location here. It is adjacent to FM 969. It is right by the Valverde subdivision. The current zoning is P2. The lot was just annexed into the city in order to receive city services. And upon annexation, the zoning is always, it comes in automatically at P2, and then the applicant needs to come forth to rezone the property to the appropriate use. This current developer is wanting to develop this land as a retail center slash gas station. Essentially, they want commercial use, so they're trying to go to P5, commercial. The current land use map has this entire area as neighborhood residential. But as you can see, based on this, that is, this is just a small snippet of the future land use map. The entire area is neighborhood residential. And so, there is a little bit of need for some commercial relief in there, especially considering the adjacency to Pearl River, the Colony, and the Valverde subdivision. Notification was sent out to the 24 surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the lot. We have not received any opposition or support. Essentially, we have not received any responses back from the neighborhood. As you can see, kind of here, based on this, the, the only adjacent properties are really the Valverde subdivision, the Duff property, and then the Colony. Any questions?
Do we have any wastewater issues in that area right now? Or drainage issues in that area right now?
No. Not currently.
If they change it to, if we change the zoning, and they can do commercial, how much parking lot are they gonna put in that thing?
My, the market demand currently in the VTR code.
That's what we was talking about earlier, so.
One quick one. You said, Kennedy, you said it was a gas station retail center. Any idea how many shops, stores we're talking about, or is that to be decided?
That will be decided at site plan.
Okay.
I'm personally in favor of this. I live in Hunter's Crossing, and having a Texaco is very convenient versus having to drive into town. So, I see that this property would probably be something similar for serving all those houses that are going.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's good to have those amenities close by. It minimizes the traffic within town to have it out there in your vicinity, and also encourages that neighborhood walkability.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we.
First, we have to open up a public hearing.
We gotta, we gotta hope, yeah, yes, so. I got them, yeah.
I don't believe, has anyone signed up for this item that you're aware of?
I'm, I'm double-checking. I thought, I thought I saw, but I, there, yeah, I saw one somewhere. These are all the ones that we had, sir. I'll go through my other ones. I thought I, like he did, I thought I saw one for 4F, but, oh, here we go. Ms. Larson, she does not wish to speak, but she was the one that supported 4F, right? So, that was earlier. Yeah, it was just the ones that we had that did not wish to speak. So, we're good. Alright, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, I'd make, like to make a motion to change lot R394 from a P2 rule to a P5 core.
So, it'd be the recommendation for council?
That, yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Alright.
Commissioner Harris, my mistake. We do need to postpone or table item 4B6, since that was left for 4B.
Okay.
So, if you could just present that.
To table that item? Okay.
Yeah, to table item 4B6. That was the last one.
Can we get a, a motion for that?
So moved.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?